Why don't you have a law that can state that in certain company employ this few people or certain amount of people who are foreigners and the rest should be South African citizens? Don't we have that law? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we take the second round? Can I say one, two, three? From this side? Four, five, six? Seven, eight, nine? Is that ten? Can we take ten?
Thank you. My name is Paul Nemasea. I'm from Nemasea Village. I'm a prince from Nemasea. I do handle the issues in my area. I'm also a ward committee. I'm also in the Niamni against crime scheme. We just stay next to the border. I'm happy because many concern that I have has been addressed. Therefore, I won't take lot of time as there was an order. Last time there was a meeting. When we under Niamni against crime which was established last year. And it's also need government support. We are not afraid, we're not scared to die. We volunteered willingly. When we are seated with someone from military. He said he got only 120 military services or soldiers to work around the borders. And he had a concern in, addressed it with his superior that he needs for soldiers. He needs to have an addition of 45 soldiers. We said we'll support you, we'll help you. We are happy that you are here today as parliament. We said we'll work together if in any village we have two people. Who will work with police around our borders. What fascinated me around the committee? There's traffic, they involve, we have a problem. This police station is not amongst our people, the one in Chamtumbo. Let it relocate and go to the Madimbo. I think it, we will have to take it to Madimbo, then it will be able to be accessible. Now it looks like it's a police base. Wait, it's not where people will access it. Can it please be moved? There are villages that are crime infested. Until the Gumbu area. When we talk, address this to the police. They have vehicle shortage. Even the staff members are few. Please help us. We won't end this crime here. If you are living here in South Africa. Please remember this is the main border. Please consider those few things that you have suggested. Lastly. As you see, we, crime is growing every day. We, in our workplace, there is nepotism. As a vendor working in certain area. And a certain position. I will take my relative or someone I know. If I'm a Tzana speaker. I will take my fellow Tzana speaker. Just right from the top. They're from parliament.
That is the biggest problem.
If possible. Can't you have a scheme when takes? Which will have a look on or fight against this nepotism? South Africa will succeed if you do that, thank you so much.
Can we, can we please adhere to the three minutes? The last speaker took more than five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Nemapakoni Lieutenant Samuel Terra. Thank you so much parliament for coming to the people. I just see that you have fulfilled your promise that you will come to the people. I do support the bill. I want to say the following. We have problem concerning the grant. I stay in rural areas under Ward Nine. In the Makabini Village. As people who live in rural villages, our main thing that keep us alive or support us are animals. We have chickens, we have all animals. When we are given these certain grants, you find that women, youth have different percentages. We thought we were liberated, but I think we, we are not. We are going back to where we come from in apartheid times. You are saying fifty fifty. This is no longer fifty fifty, other people are considered more concerning like rather than us men. For us, it's a difficult situation. When we apply to this grant that I'm talking about, only women and children afforded these grants, not us as men. I'm saying to this government that I love so much, when we go to this application, don't consider the gender, just give what you are giving. Let me go to another issue. People are talking about the border. There is one problem though. I don't think if you have cattle in your kraal, you will need a caretaker who is a foreigner. In this border, you find that especially the in round Niyani area, our people are not considered. Only people, soldiers who are working here are from Ploquane, are from Cape Town. Our people here are not considered at all. I speak this with pain. Soldiers that we have and policies that we have around here, they got positions around the time when we were not liberated or before democracy.
You are already over four minutes. Can, can we, we, the micro, the microphones?
So I'm concerned, you are saying you are concerned about time and you only come once in a while and we have many issues to raise. Why are you cutting us? What should we say? Are you determining what we should say or not? We have this police for stocks of safety? They are posted in towns or in other locations, but in the rural areas where there are animals or cattle, they are not there. So how do they see what is taking place in our areas? Let me respect you and your concern about time, thank you so much. Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Madamara Pitanjovu. I live here in Musina, Phase One. I am here concerned about people's safety, citizen's safety and this bill that we are talking about, we didn't, we don't know much about. We didn't read the documents, we've got the document, but we didn't read it because we just received them today. And other things I want to address, other speakers have already addressed them. We won't support the bill, we can't support the bill if the government does not take care of us. People have been talking about borders here, we are not safe, we have few police, we are not safe. In Musina, we've got one police station, one vehicle to cater for a very huge area. That vehicle has to go to Mapani Toll Gate. This is just unfair, the government is not fair. We are pleading with you, please go and take this recommendation and come back to us. There is no help, if we stand here, we talk, we tell you our concern, you go back, you, you do nothing our concern, you don't come back and report to us. Lastly, I will talk about the border. There are a lot of people, they, let me say, staff that is working there and other staff members have been added as well. We really don't know how it works, people, they don't service people, they see it as they wish, take, talk on their phones as they wish. Yesterday, there was an incident in policing. I'm saying this so that you understand that some of the practices or things that police do are not well. There were other men who came here, fought certain men, took certain woman and took that man, his husband, her husband, oh yeah. When they go to the police station, the police didn't allow that person to open criminal charges. They say if you lay criminal charges, even that other one should lay a criminal charge against you. Please consider this issue, thank you.
And thank you for giving me an opportunity.
Good morning to everyone.
My name is Peter Jack, I'm from here in Musina. I'm representing Sangkobe district and also a structure called Musina to the Front and as well Nafkok. I'm here, standing here to say, we cannot adopt this bill due to the fact of we have received the communication through municipality. But there was no any planetary meeting amongst ourselves as a community. We were supposed to be having all structures of community before you can even arrive with this bill and we discuss it with the lawyers. So that they can translate this bill, because I so believe now, everyone sitting here, majority of the house, we don't understand this bill. Then we will speak about police, we don't have police in South Africa as a whole. Because if we can check the state of hijacking, government cars are being hijacked. We, we don't speak about civilians, but we speak about a government cars that being hijacked in the presence of police, soldiers, BMA, security officers. So we were supposed to be making an assessment to our community and give you the proper report. Because what we are doing right now, we, we are just pushing a matter of roll call and make sure that you guys, when you live here, no law will be implemented. Because we see difference of police in the shavings, they are drinking while they are having vehicles of state. So I just want to let you know that as a Sangkobe, as a civic to the community, it's very unfair to come and talk to people to, about something that they don't understand. And if you can check the house, we were supposed to be more than thousands of people here or gathering at the shop ground. So that we can have amendment of this bill. Then also, we are experiencing a problem, a high volume problem into subs department and the soldiers. Bribs, when we speak about bribes, we cannot speak about to say Zimbabweans. You ask yourself about issue of deport. They will, South African law is it allowing only Zimbabweans to be deported? What about Indians? Because we have lot of Indians in town, but they are not arrested and they are not being deported. So which criteria are they using? Because they are here making a business and not using a labor law, but to employ illegally immigrants in their shops. And make sure that all those illegally immigrants, when they come to the location, they tell their friends, then they go and make a robbery in front of police station, selling drugs and everything. So we cannot entertain issue of saying we have police. Also, you must make sure that subs and the, all subs, S A and D F and securities, they must work jointly with community structures. Because we so believe that we don't have a majority of officials in the offices. But we are having people who are sweating every night, making sure they are patrolling in our towns for the safety purpose. But when you call police, there is not a vehicle. So I don't know if you are saying we must accept this bill, it's very unfair to the community. Because every day, we are experiencing high volume of crime. Border, all the borders of South Africa, they are not safe, because majority of cars that going outside of the border in your presence. So lastly, I want to speak about a safety into our municipalities in terms of service delivery. You are here speaking about security, police and everyone. We were supposed to be having police with handcuffs there to arrest people who are closing electricity. Also to arrest people who are closing water. So you expect people to flood in the, in the community hall, but without water and electricity. Hence you want us to amend the bill, I will post from here, thank you.
Thank you so much. For being afforded this precious time. I'm councillor Mukani KMC. From Ward Nine under Musina Municipality. I'm also a chairperson, the chairperson of community services under Musina Municipality. First and foremost, I say I welcome the bill. For, I support it with the following reasons. As the chairperson, we are working high and low. We are working very hard for our community to be safe. We also get supported by the Department of Defense. Department of Police. Together with the newly launched BM, is it BMS? BMA, launched by the president recently. We are working hand in hand with this authority. We are also going to re-erect the fence and make sure that our area is safe and protected. It is true, people are saying that they are not safe or they feel unsafe. But yesterday, we had an incident between Makabini and Domboni. The police recovered four vehicles which were carrying illicit cigarette. This is a joint operation between the police and the S A and D F. The only outcry that we have or the main concern that we have is that we have few police and few vehicles. Even though we have newly trained police officers, but we still running short of a lot of them. I've heard lot of speakers, lot of previous speakers saying that Zimbabwean immigrants are the ones that are doing crimes in our area. While one finger is pointing there, the other four are pointing at me. We are also helping them, we are assisting them to commit these crimes. So this bill, I believe that it's going to make sure that it strengthens and enforce the security amongst our villages or areas. Even the soldiers, they are complaining that they are very few. We need to recruit more of soldiers so that they can also help in this fight. So I'm making a plea to the community to say, please assist the police and the S A and D F members. And also, the police must make sure that they keep the secrets of, or rather, everything that is reported to them, they must make it a secret. They must not reveal it to anyone else. I thank you and I welcome this opportunity, I support the bill.
I thank you.
Thank you so much.
I greet everybody in the mighty name of Jesus and I greet the elder of the parliament. This is a good. I'm standing here as the elder, I am standing here as the, the patient, patienta. Ke mi fabialoka eh motofadi wawala pensione. I've got a question why we patienta, we pu- we pay more rent of water than the youth? Really wana batufa batufadi repate la eh rente wa mochelo omuncho fita baswa. We should be assisted so that there are many old women who have talent to do something with their hands. Bialo mochelo owa jono teksitje, this one did you feel coach eh kabaka lorgore onelba side babanchi balorba ichu ben lakadiyata cha wana kobe ba ba dirachela tenya ne balifa mochelo omunchi. To be given equipment to do something. We can make shoes, we can make everything catering, but we don't have somebody to support us. Bialo retloka letehofa renelma buhoni eh upya arena di dirishwa retokopela na tutuja kadidi shwa cha wo shuma rokonawi shumen. My greatest question is, while my son passed away in twenty twenty-two. Bialo putishu akashi, ka twenty-two, ka twenty-two remorua ka atlokofa. I was paying water one thousand, sometimes two thousand seven hundred. Ki ba kipate la one thousand wa two thousand seven hundred, kilefela metsifela. They were saying they were in office, but it have already passed away, but they were saying I must still pay it. Bialo, ana kukuwa kontronya bu maspala ba ki ileka hopela pokulejo epeja barahawa, uswane ju lefa scolo tose. I attend the church. Every month we go to Jo back in church. What shall I go with there? Eh lena ki, ki mukereki, kweidi ka kweidi, reswane lakorriya ga utenka kereki, bialo ketlo konabi oyabiankereki kabaka lorgore. I must buy my apparel. How can I buy and food without money because it goes to the water? Bialo ketlo kawaka di shwa cha kali di jo kabaka lorgore, bialo kipala lakorriya seokabaka lorgore chela teka kamuka elefa metsi. I attend school, school here in nineteen sixty, but I don't have my own home. It's only my pass-away mother, a family house. I've got no peace. Even the estate my brother give, I don't have peace. They fight with me about these houses. Bialo eh len troilo kidula oyewana kawone kujoo eh kenele, ki kidula ntronye, kenele utiakabanu weshakamantronye kawone kujoo. That's why I ask assistance. I will make this brief. Ki hopelo yaka eh kawariyalo keza kila fa sekalewa.
Thank you very much.
Greetings to the House at large. Kenam khadi matlala kibeleju mmesina. My name is Khadi Matlala. I was born here in Messina. Mara kibeleke la oshuk border post, the border between Swaziland and South Africa. But I work eh at the border, the border between ya ya garra eh Swaziland le Afrika Bora. Eh na kucheye president atilemo Messinamo. Eh when the president visited Messina. I thought maybe utlo diradi changes. Eh ki ileka ngrangoro mutfumwe utlo diradi petoro. According to my research. Oya lega tonyeksho chaka. Hmm president abatswane la asatisa, asa employer ba tuwaba. Eh the, the pres- there's, there are people whom the president was not supposed to have employed. Because o employer ba tuwaba verekango mokaikara aona bordera, aona fence. Because eh the, the, we, we do not have a border, there's no fence. He employs people who come here to protect the, the, the border eh and the fence, which is eh nonexistent. Even the soldiers again, leaka employer soldiers, mara aona fence, they are not safe at all. Even if they can eh employ eh soldiers eh, there's no border here. Still we remain unsafe. Yes. Ki boni lura wakoko o implo you weva to for no, no purpose. So I saw it eh not necessary for us to employ people because eh there's, there's nothing to do here. Ki ruleju mmesina, Messina ebili safe. We even sleep outside. I grew up here in Messina. Eh this used to be a very safe area. We, lika interbe runoroba lakanti. Eh aona vela rokonuli ya torupo, are safe. But today you cannot even travel to the nearest town. It's not safe. Liko kampenyama solenka nakalula the old manly boyfriend, how safe? Even eh. How's a military? In the military camp eh, you can just go there and stay with your boyfriend there eh it's, it's, there are no rules that can say you cannot do that. There's no military I can say, so. Question yaka ube idikiye. Here's my second point. If kidirele mistake sars, kidira export and import ne? Eh now. Kidira export and import clearing agent. Yeah, I work as a clearing agent. I work with the in- imports and exports. If I've done a mistake, kidirele posho. Eh and then now eh when I made a mistake during my course of work. Kidire penalty. And then I get penalized. So I'm amazed here mo location la rena because ribudi choro ridire vukaosienza leka president tabo mbeki. So how utla vianu rechargei we di rooms cha charena. It's, it's, it's surprising me eh during eh the tenure of president banking, we were advised or encouraged to vuga uzenzele here in our area. So ki makachokori, that mo laowao, everybody charged eh the rooms, extra money the rooms for the whole year. Who amend you parliamente na, I want to know that. The rooms? If you have four room, you build rooms outside. So we are, we are charged here in Messina. Oh yes, and then now eh maybe when we have some back eh back, backyard rooms and then maybe you are renting the plot, you are taxed here in Messina. Eh I don't know, when, when did that law start? Yes, and then again, people like disabled, offense, li di, li libaba choka, libaba savereking, how will they survive? Now eh bialo batwelo re eh bapa lolo eh kiwa, kiwa olafati, bo na ba 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 twadi, banu va 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 tepi chela ten eh batro konabo we finisha kaye. Eh ki butcha tabo nangli bo na, ne di problem chedi inchi Messina, which means lena ba parlamenting, lika uru likle twice or thrice per year, uru rokonoli briefa di problem cheri nangli ton. That is one of many concerns eh here in Messina, but you eh from parliament, you visit us once or twice a year. You must eh visit more often so that eh we are able to tell you about the challenges that we face or to you business. After we finish here, you can go to the border is then you'll see uri aona border. Bialo elfe chamon ya Alabama, kolo ye kuwa moluane, ete pana lakala namasore, aona ntori uru kemo luaneku. Enerinyokori, ai lur mulao amend you we di tariffs or whatever. People must be called. Ba obu ujohuri, di build city eh mikami choaolka mchoe ne ba respect the elders in municipality. Now, when you amend the, the laws that eh have to do with tariffs, please eh invite people eh, inform people and also one appeal is that please respect eh the elders of our communities. I thank you. Kala wa.
Thank you very much.
De, de ni macheron.
Greetings everyone. Good morning.
Eh kamisunede gatomamba zone ndizore.
First and foremost, I would like to say.
Ngazuli bisaka bo chepessen eh.
Eh specially dedicated to the chairperson.
Ori chipinga ndicha nde.
Time is crucial.
Eh so ndakoto dorende bayreche zore chipinga nisidawo.
So let me give you my piece of advice to say next time.
Isuwa fava tuwajkuamba wa out of agenda.
When you hear people talking out of the context.
Wa narai tu muka ata.
You have a right to stop that person.
That's why wakona three minutes awela esako chimbilesazone.
That is why your time allocation is not going as planned.
Zuno next time ndakui tlori, isu, rishiva namitanga longa sayu rishipinga, rekono chifara ba kacha mutunga wari ba narai.
So next time when we have gatherings like this, please make sure that you stop the person if you hear that they are not talking to the right context or the bill that we're talking about.
Or not cha cherezaze, vatartetza zone wachokoma, wunja watu wonukamba, abachamba zone era nanaze wene bamisa son.
Because after having listened to carefully to your introduction, I can deduce that a lot of people here, they are not talking to the bill.
Retino famtashware netina zuluamde ne darango dira zuluasamde.
Very soon, somebody will stand up and say, I don't have food in the house and that's not why, what we are here for.
Kamisuneda takucha lazone apa, azongo dala.
Mine is the following.
Eh no takucha ramapongo auri, renewatuwa chinani riata muziwa papitu.
I want to put it to you that we as men are also part eh or rather we are not immune to gender-based violence.
Zuno ndo imera u kati samurai we wa bill nishikoto doru. Uye uye sezwa na, mightela arinewatuwa chinani ka utamuziwa.
So I want you to go and look at this matter because as men, we are also being abused.
Ba doana mutwa chefu makazina, ayseru obiniwa.
A woman will go and report and say she's been raped.
Zichia zichia uchiusingo wa wano rini, ola mutwa muna aona suzeaita son.
After investigations, the man will found innocent.
Zuno ndakoto doru katisa omuraywa eh bili, adizikoro usezwa na omuraywa if mu fu makazare obiniwa, aseka awanofa angobiniwa, na eneka faro kwebiwa.
So in this bill, you must also include or incorporate this to say if a woman go and falsely accused or report a rape case.
Kamisi, roka ka, ka kisa loambwa, uchi piwa.
I'm sorry for using the wrong word for rape.
Eh ndiko amend omu la ndiko, if arari mu fu makazare uchi piwa, awanolo fasison.
So if a woman.
Omo neneka faro kwebiwa.
If a woman says she's been raped and later it's established that eh she was falsely accusing the perpetrator, then she must also be convicted.
Or ba doana chongichipiga wana ba tuwakosokera jelema, alangamtwa na akutoto dere underran.
Because some men are dying in jail today because of someone who falsely accused them.
Azongo cha ipo underran daro obini, oko chi piwa.
Because she wanted money or extortion and when she doesn't get that money, then she goes to the police.
N'oliwa ndo angwa u didiva zapa.
I forgot to introduce myself.
N'efi muniay kalosi.
My name is Munyai Kalos.
N'ibama dimbo kawa di eti ya umafela fistosa esawat.
From ward eight eh madimbo under comrade fistos mafela or councilor fistos mafela. Thank you.
Can, can I, can I please eh? Can we add here to the three minutes? I've been very generous. Must finish by one or two.
Eh rokoti opetanga area oto masonezo, batuwa tebanibakodo ambapa noni, kari tebeza rishipinga chenda nekeza chon, goru bamrawangi batuwa sakota beza rishipinga.
Okay, macheroni batuwa te.
Good morning everyone.
Ne nduko nyaguanban, nduko pao hapo uko osokuamba ma polisa fezi, usakuamba wanama magistrate, na boni baiti saha ni kabafa ringi.
I hear people talking about the S A N D F and the police, but no one is saying anything about the prosecutors or magistrates.
Esu batwa chifare wai, dingabana ndo ra ndo buraya motu.
When people get arrested, for example, if I've murdered someone.
N'ichiburaya o motu, dadanda fariwa.
When I murder someone, then I'll be arrested.
N'ichidanji faruandi dozuave genty police station.
I'll only stay for a week at the police station.
Esu ndichu viere ra eh, nduko oncha ten thousand.
In my next appearance, I'll pay ten thousand for bail.
Ba wanan ndo buraya oho, ndo vani chikochimbiramne.
And the next thing, I'm walking around the streets and I'm free.
Ola mutu ndomo buraya ho ba bebaba ova sujia han.
So imagine the pain that goes to the relatives of the deceased.
Esu zutunamus, okosube yakaboni ba parlamenti nuri, murayuka kati sechanda and ma polisa kangezu, ma polisa pa, aona ma polisa pa teti ngori kanga ngama choro nujipika, udo wana hotzaba tuwabidi, ma polisa mararu oba.
So I'm putting it to you to enforce and strengthen this bill because even when we go to the police stations, you find that there are no police officers, they are out there, we don't know what they are doing and there are very few of them.
Desan chibo nabugevenga usafe ngori, kanga mutu oburaywa, mutu na eno ufunati revenge.
That is why crime will never end in this country because if somebody murders my relative, then I'm also gonna revenge the same way.
And esapa musina, renemusina ra chiraramda, marama dubana ra chiraramda wori, ugevenga ho na 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 shuba na shunga pa chukoburaya.
For example, here in Messina, we used to sleep outside at night, but nowadays we can't because crime is so rife. Even the young kids are committing crime every day.
Uchitochimba ngamrando uchikorukaya duru bonu ruonya gakana something, udo wana okoncha rupanganga chinga na chingapa, chaba jeera begela ni cha socha cha jeera begi cha rataku.
Even if you can take a walk to town, you'll be approached by a very young boy who will mug you and take of your possessions.
Aduneba ke gura aru wasave.
As elderly women, we are not safe at all.
Namidilichiko vera ichitochasixi, uko varanduko kieru.
Even at our homes, by six o'clock, we make sure that we lock the gates and we sleep because.
Sha obiri kechi.
Secondly.
Rukombera u, u pe te duapa, rukoro bangga mosquito.
Please come and please come and assist us here because we are dying of mosquito bites. So please, if you can come and eh and spray this area.
Nerua ruwa famsina, bebeane famsina, auchi, kara uka duwa musuma, uka duwa ma wuru, babati spraya hota pa non. Mara suno mukuswa churunoko fotera, aucha ruto gomera shini.
Back then during the apartheid regime, they used to come and eve- effuse the whole area, but now our government is not taking care of us.
Aba ruto gomera uko ufanga malaria pa no Messina.
Please take care of us because we are dying of malaria.
N'oliwa.
I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ah, ni macheroni wamebo ote.
Good morning to everyone.
Ne zibachi wana ndo dahapan di nachiro.
I came here because I'm concerned. I can't see, I'm blind.
Eh ndi bofu tikoba onani.
I can't see.
Zuno ndinachiro cha mudiwanga, mudi oyo wanda fatera, ndofatera madini.
So my main concern is that I've, I got an RDP house, but where it is situated or where it was built, it's in the muddy area.
Zuno ndafatera guwanga onda tivera madihala, abo bangga bada.
I've tried to erect a wall so that the water can avoid my house, but now it doesn't eh, it's not eh helping at all.
Eh ndariapa la handono fata rugua, ndafata, ndafata, mi kukumi miraru, ngorim, chongovili aringueteliwa, nduretelaro munti.
I also extended and built two more extra rooms, but they are shakes because I only received one room in Chongoville.
Zuno hanepala ba masipara, neti namtunoko shuma mudiini.
So there's no one working at home?
Zuno ndinaziduru zanga, zazisiwa na zafu.
I have my four orphaned grandchildren.
Zuno mi kukue, ndani kuetela bori, ziduru zidodi tamba tambanga, ngo muka namu yenigo oda.
So I'm making this plea to you so that my grandchildren or my visitors can feel safe when they visit me.
Zuno neti chala, cha redaya munde, nde ba masipara bakojia yote.
I'm also not receiving my Yamden. I'm also not grieving my, getting my grant, my old age gr- old age grant. The municipality is taking all my money.
Zunda ndakoto ombera bo, rekava jeene yobo, ya yoto badela madi, banchelebo he ya di rumu, ngorirumu, abo na, neti kuetarumu, ndote etamikukuya baana.
So please, to the municipality, only take that money which is eh for the rates of the water and electricity and leave some because we are not supposed to pay for the houses that we've eh extended or the rooms that we've extended in our backyards.
Musina rojene, ruanga maguma guma, arirari.
Musina, we are complaining, we've been infested with maguma guma.
And yapamunambono unarakoba one muje zunawa koba onanga apa, ndindu zawatu, ralokombe ro rimasi para, ka, ka ite pulane, areme miriyee.
So the municipality, we are making a plea to say, please come and cut down some of the trees because that's where they are hiding. So the municipality, we are making a plea to say, please come and cut down some of the trees because that's where they are hiding. Because women are being marred, their positions are being taken by these young boys and Maguma. I beg you, please assist us. With both hands. I thank you. Her name is Selinando. Greetings, everyone. Both the elderly and the youth. My name is Johanna Maemo Tlou.
I'm an A N C member. I'm also a ward committee member.
And I'm also a Nafkok member. I'm grateful for the opportunity that I've been given. And now also, I'd like to thank our leadership, the parliament in general. Now, here's my problem. Now, the first problem is with regard to the Department of Health. Now, I wouldn't want to speak on behalf of other areas. I would like to speak about the problems that we encounter as the residents of Mosina. When we visit clinics and hospitals.
We are voting for this government.
There's always no medication for us people who are voting for this government. Now, when we look into the matter, we discover that the medication is being taken by foreigners. Now, when I look into this problem, I discover that our constitution is failing us.
South Africa belongs to all who lives in it.
In our constitution, there's an area that says. Whereas when we visit other countries, countries like Malawi and Zimbabwe, we do not get to receive such services.
Then I had to pay for my medication.
I was in Malawi last year, October, and it happened that I fell ill. I then had to pay for my medication. Whereas ourselves who ensure that this government remains in power, when we are supposed to get services, it is the foreigners who get such services, not us. Now, there are patients who are suffering from chronic ailments. And they are still receiving medication. When we visit our clinics and hospitals, we find that there's no medication. Now, taking into consideration the kind of heat that we experience here in Mosina. A patient having to find him or herself spending the whole month not having taken a high blood medication. Now, that is a huge problem because when you go for your consultations at the hospitals or clinics and every time, maybe, let me say, for a period of a month, not receiving your medication, that would make one to end up maybe being aggressive and also fighting the doctors that are supposed to be helping them.
It was once brought into attention.
Now, the problem that we have.
Then people referred her as nepotism, and then which was not.
Now, when she tried to intervene and help, people refer to her as someone who is practicing nepotism, which is not. According to me, she was right.
Yeah, the drugs and substance abuse.
I will now come to the issue of drugs and substance abuse.
If ever maybe I'm wrong, then I stand to be corrected.
If I am wrong, then I stand to be corrected.
Who is here the drugs and substance abuse?